Members of the public, and welcome to this meeting. Please, would you all remain standing if you are able whilst my chaplain says prayers?
Let's bow our heads for a moment. Lord God, as we meet here tonight, we are aware that Christmas Day is only a week away. We are reminded of the faith that was held by our ancestors and passed on to us, that in the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God, and the Word became flesh and lived among us, and we have seen His glory. We thank you for the values that Jesus came to bring, the values of which we are especially reminded at this time of year: honesty, integrity, and care for others. We are reminded of those who are especially vulnerable at this time of year, those for whom Jesus had a special regard, those who are homeless or ill, or bereaved or struggling to make ends meet. We also pray for those who are overloaded with work. We give you thanks for the delight of children and the fun they have performing their nativity plays, dressing up as shepherds, angels, wise men, Mary and Joseph, and even donkeys, camels, and sheep. And we thank you for the songs and carols that bring so much comfort. As we do our business here tonight, may our hearts and minds be open to the needs of our city and to your gentle guidance. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. I'd like to remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded and streamed live on our website. Please, can members also remember to speak directly into their microphones and to switch them on before speaking and off once they're finished. I have also been asked at meetings of the council to make a standard evacuation announcement. Please note that, in case of an emergency, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the council chamber at once, taking your personal belongings with you. Following the green fire exit signs, leave the civic centre onto Duke Street via the stairs which are located near to the end of the corridor adjoining this chamber. Lifts should not be used. Please gather by the War Memorial immediately outside the civic centre, and, if and when it is safe to return to the building, an announcement will be made. You should not return to the building until told that it is safe to do so. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but I should point out that only the councillors, officers, and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure that cameras are pointed only in this direction. Please reduce silence or switch off your mobile phones whilst this meeting is taking place. I would like to remind members that there are three styles of voting that can be used tonight. These are a show of hands, voting by assent, or a recorded vote, which would have to be requested by ten members. I would also like to remind members that those moving an item of business have ten minutes and a right of reply for five minutes. Those seconding items have five minutes and can reserve their right to speak too before the mover of the motion has the final say. All other councillors can only speak once for five minutes per item. It must be before I invite the seconder or mover to speak at the end. Agenda item number one. I've received apologies for absence for this meeting from councillors Dan Clark, Hawkins, O'Brien, Raven, and Tron. Are there any others to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've also had apologies for councillor Buckby.
Thank you. Agenda item...
Councillor Thompson?
Sorry?
Councillor Thompson's ready.
Oh, hello. Sorry, I didn't see you over there.
Thank you. Whilst it's not an apology for absence as such, due to prior engagement, I'll have to leave at about quarter past eight, and I apologise for that.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know. Agenda item two, Mayor's announcements. As members will be aware, we have sadly lost one former city councillor and one serving city councillor since our last meeting. Ian Wright passed away in September, having served as a city councillor for the Conservatives between May 1999 and May 2023 in the Little Baddow, Danbury, and Sandon Ward. Ian was the mayor of Chelmsford in 2004 and chaired the planning committee between 2003 and 2019, before becoming the vice-chair for their last four years as a councillor. Ian Grundy also sadly passed away in October, having served as a city councillor for the Conservatives since 2003 in the South Hanafield Stock and Margretting Ward. Ian also held two cabinet roles, as the Cabinet Member for Technical Services between May 2007 and May 2009, and then Cabinet Member Safer Communities between May 2009 and May 2017. He was also the Vice Chairman of the Audit and Risk Committee between 2023 and 2024. They will both be missed by all of us, and our thoughts continue to be where their families. Please join me in a minute's silence in their memory. Thank you. I would now like to invite councillor Whitehead to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You've probably said most of the things I was going to say. And I don't apologise for saying some of them twice, really, but both Ians, I'll add them together if that's all right, really, because they were both stalwarts of this council for a long while. And Ian Wright, especially on planning and things, was the acknowledged expert for that, and indeed was asked to serve as deputy afterwards, really, which I think shows credit for his impartiality as a planner, which is the great thing for planning over all of these years. Ian Grundy, of course, was a great friend of mine, and we'd been working together for twenty odd years. And, as you know, he looked young and was much older than I was, really. Well, slightly older than I was. But nonetheless, from that point of view, had that sort of youthful effect on people that he met, really. And nobody felt that he was just doing the job. He was known as Mr Stock, as you all appreciate, why? And I'm delighted that we have been able to find replacements for him this evening, and I'm sure you might mention that later on. But nonetheless, it takes a while to replace both of the people who were sort of full stalwarts of this council, really. So that I'm glad we managed to remember them, and their funerals, which a number of us went to, really, were memorable in different ways, really. So it's a sad day, but nonetheless, one which we understand and have to move on from. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Whitehead. I would like to welcome councillor Gillian Bonnet to the council, after she was elected last week as the new councillor for South Hanafield Stock and Margretting Ward. By the 21st of December, the mayor, Mayor S, Deputy Mayor, Consul, have attended in total 257 engagements and meetings. And I can tell you now, we have had a really busy December. We've enjoyed it. We continue to support Fairley Hospice as the Mayor's charity by acting as ambassadors at various events. But at this moment in time, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome cadet staff Sergeant Ben Mahoney, who has been appointed as the Mayor's Cadet. Staff Sergeant Mahoney, I would like you to step forward to receive this badge, which can be worn on your uniform. Well done. Congratulations. There you are.
Which more?
All right. If you go back a bit and turn this way, there's someone up there who would like to take a photo. All right?
That we can do it.
Tons. Okay. Well done. I would also like to explain that Ben Mahoney is actually studying for exams at this moment in time. And granted that he leaves now, so that he can go home and hopefully study more and pass those exams. Merry Christmas, and we'll see you later. Agenda item three, declarations of interest. Members will be aware of the need to declare any interest that they may have in business at this meeting, either now or when we come to the item. Does anyone wish to declare any interest at this point? Agenda item two, minutes. The minutes of the meeting of 17th of July 2024 have been distributed. Are you happy to accept them as a correct record? In that case, the minutes are approved. Excuse me? Two. Agenda item five, public questions. There are no questions... well, no questions were submitted for this meeting. Agenda item six, cabinet question time. I understand printed copies will be on your desk. So it's agenda item six is the cabinet question time. At the time of the deadline of noon on Monday, three questions had been submitted by cabinet... for cabinet members. There is a right of reply to ask a supplementary question or comment, which, if exercised, also applies to the cabinet member. The first is from councillor Jeeps, and I ask councillor Foster to respond to it.
Thank you, Mayor. This Liberal-led council has declared an environmental emergency and a housing crisis. In 2019, it inherited extremely healthy financial reserves from the Conservatives and building sites to enable home building. Whilst the Liberals have vigorously pursued not cutting the grass or maintaining designated open space, it does not seem to have applied the same focus in prioritising activity to address the housing crisis. This council has several, I believe, 200 brownfield sites that have the potential to provide affordable housing. Very specifically, since 2019, it has owned a brownfield site worth, at the time, £5 million adjacent to Riverside. Given the housing crisis, why are we still waiting nearly six years for this development to take place? Why has all the potential for housing not been maximised? Land values have now fallen, building costs have soared. All this has contributed to the dire financial position the council now faces. In addition, we now see reserves spent £1.3 million on a new greenfield site without planning permission, while the Riverside site remains undeveloped. Our residents are now footing the bill for this tardy approach, with increased costs and the very real prospect of high council tax increases. In the nearly six years that has passed, what has been done to develop the Riverside site? When will much-needed homes be built? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am a little bit slightly surprised to be asked this question. As far as I'm aware, it is a very similar question that my colleague opposite asked at a recent cabinet meeting. I shall therefore respond with the same as I did previously, in case no one understood at the time. As is well known to the councillor opposites, the Riverside site was cleared in 2019, just before a major incident, the Covid, which impacted everyone, not least the council and its activities. The world was hugely changed, both by Covid and the Conservative government's actions, both before, during, and after Covid, not least of which was the trust mini-budget. Therefore, there are a number of reasons why this site has not yet been developed. Economic conditions are very, very different. As you acknowledge, land values have stagnated or declined, whilst build costs have rocketed, which makes a real difference to the viability of this site. In order to enhance the potential value of the site, the City Council's property section have been investigating obtaining planning permission. Various different designs have been drawn up and explored. However, this has become a much more complex site than was previously thought. Constraints include Environment Agency stipulations to run a model that allows for a one-in-30-year flood event, plus the adjacent conservation area. Massing and, as I said, viability are also new concerns. Now, that was basically my response to the earlier question. But I will now add. The criticism of us not going ahead with the development of this very popular central car park is, I consider, quite odd, considering the party opposite made a huge fuss recently about the fact that we are going ahead with the development of another car park at Rectory Lane East. Waterloo Lane Car Park brings in £400,000 per year. So any development would have to exceed that income to the council by some margin. Whereas Rectory Lane East is a smaller car park on the edge of the town centre, bringing in much less money, and where there is a larger car park 100 yards away, Rectory Lane West, that we know, because we've counted, can absorb the cars from Rectory Lane East Car Park. And that development will provide 22 desperately needed all-social-rent properties. However, all the modelling that the property section have done has shown that we could not get any affordable housing on the Riverside site. So effectively, we would be removing a very popular, a very beneficial car park site to provide luxury flats for commuters. And additionally, I wonder where all the... one of the questions we were asked were, where would the people in Rectory Lane West going to go? Where would all the people in Waterloo Car Park going to car? And mentioning the matter of the 200 brownfield sites, as everyone well knows, we do not own... the council does not own the 200 brownfield sites. The vast majority of those are very small, and the vast majority have planning permission already. And again, as everybody knows, the council cannot, much as we would wish, force developments, force people to develop their land. Furthermore, there are at present 6,972 homes with planning permission at this point. Now, even if we take... if we looked at that and said, well, how many affordable homes have we got planning permission for? And you say, well, that might be 2,000. I have taken a very conservative 1,000. So, you know, we've got planning permission and other sites coming up for planning permission quite soon. And again, as people very well know, lots of, lots of things can contribute to delays in obtaining planning permission. Warren Farm, for instance, was included in the previous local plan, which was agreed and put forward in 2018 slash 2019. And yet that has very recently, i.e. I think last month, come up for planning. So having given all this extra information, I will now say, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jeeps, do you wish to reply?
Thank you for your very full answer, councillor Foster.
Councillor Jeeps, could you stand? Oh, sorry, I can't see that.
No.
Sit down. Sit down.
I think that there is an issue here about how we maximise the financial position for the council. And although I can understand the difficulties in building on that particular area, because we had those very same difficulties when we completely demolished and rebuilt Riverside. The issue is that there was a value in that site that could have been maximised, probably not so much now. And that that could have gone into reserves to help offset some of the costs that you're now spending on the greenfield sites that you're purchasing. So in terms of what's happening next, when will we see any progress on the Riverside site?
I'm not going to commit...
Councillor Foster.
Sorry, sorry. I'm not going to commit at this point to say that we will certainly be building on the Riverside site or bringing any planning. I think we need to reconsider in the light of the financial implications, certainly the financial implications of losing that 400,000. So despite you wanting us to build on that, I'm certainly not going to agree to that at this point.
Councillor Foster. The second question is from councillor Whitehead, and I'll ask councillor Robinson to respond to it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The new Labour government has announced plans to force district councils to merge and form new unitary authorities. Will the leader of the City Council give us his view of these proposals? And whether he is in favour of these plans to reduce local control, particularly of planning matters? And whether local authority leaders will be meeting to consider a joint approach to opposing four unitary councils in Essex? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Thank you, councillor Whitehead. I'm a little puzzled that councillor Whitehead is asking me to oppose four councils for Essex, as I thought three or four was his preferred option, that he's been advocating for a number of years. In fact, he's shown me some maps that he drew up about that. So I'm a little surprised about that. But I can give you an update on where we stand. And the thing is, for decades, Labour and Conservative governments have actively reduced the powers and resources of local councils. And as the White Paper acknowledges, England is one of the most centralised countries in the world with most power at national level. So if the government is going to change this, we would, of course, welcome it. Would be a surprise, but a pleasant one. Also, the public is often puzzled about which council is responsible for what, and devolution and reorganisation might bring improvements for our residents. But there is a real danger of throwing the baby out with the bathwater if we rush to change without listening to all areas and councils affected by these proposals. The government's list of proposed powers for what they are calling strategic authorities risks taking powers away from local councils, as you suggest, if not properly thought through, which seems the opposite of what they're saying they want to do. And these strategic authorities would also be run by a board of council leaders and not directly elected. But for me, the big test of any devolution proposal is actually, will it help us with our current huge challenges? Homelessness, special needs support for our children, and adult social care? And the answer at the moment looks like no. It's vital that local government stays local. Councils need to be embedded in their communities and not remote and unaccountable. And that means any new councils must not be too big, or we risk alienating ourselves from the residents that we serve. By throwing the whole system up in the air, the government could do away with the good bits as well as the bad bits. For the last 41 years, Chelmsford Council has had 21 years of Lib Dem leadership and 20 Conservative. And both parties have aimed to do the best for Chelmsford. Our recent corporate peer challenge said that Chelmsford City Council is doing great work, that it punches above its weight and has the ambition of a unitary authority. If we rush into change, I fear that we may lose that excellent work that many district councils, not just Chelmsford, are doing. So we will do all we can to ensure the best possible services for residents, whatever new structures come about. We need to get on with delivering the services that make a difference to people's lives and not be distracted by the disruption of reorganisation. There is a meeting tomorrow morning of Essex leaders and chief executives to discuss the White Paper. To date, the leader of Essex County Council hasn't shared any of his proposals with county councillors, let alone with the district councils. However, I know he has had regular meetings with ministers in recent months. Sadly, this secretive approach is rather par for the course on Essex County Council. So maybe he will reveal his hand tomorrow. But I do want to finish by adding a few words to reassure our staff, our excellent staff at our council. As I've said before, I am incredibly proud to be leader of this council. And I can only say that because of the excellence of what work that our staff does, day in, day out, on behalf of all our residents. It was really heartening to see their talent and dedication acknowledged in our corporate peer challenge review, but it wasn't a surprise. I know it can feel destabilising seeing these headlines and hearing these discussions about possible changes in what could affect your working life, especially before a holiday period when, you know, we're all more time for reflection. So I will be working with cabinet and management team to advocate for our staff and to protect the services that our residents need and deserve. And I will report back as soon as I've got some more information. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Councillor Whitehead? The third question is from councillor Scott, and I'll ask councillor Moore to respond, please. Councillor Scott?
Good evening. I note that the guidance around the new reg...
Councillor Scott, can you stand, please?
Of course. I note that the guidance around the new regulations for the National Planning Policy Framework has allowed Chelmsford City Council to continue with the submission of proposals and the process to select development sites for the future. This is now to be dealt with by the Policy Board on the 16th of January 2025, of which final decisions will be made. And these will include the very controversial proposals for a massive development at Hammond's Farm. Given the huge public interest and concerns about the development which thousands and thousands of residents oppose, does this allow sufficient transparency and scrutiny to the public and to councillors? And will this go to full council for further discussion before submission? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Scott. Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your question, councillor Scott. So you will know, members, that the revised National Planning Policy Framework, or MPPF, was published by the government last Friday, the 12th of December 2024. or MPPF, was published by the government last Friday, the 12th of December 2024. We do not want to have to start the local plan process all over again. So we must press on and we must meet the government's deadline of publishing the revised local plan for consultation no later than the 12th of March 2025. As you know, the new government has acknowledged what we have been saying for a long time. There is a housing crisis in our country and a particular shortage of genuinely affordable homes. Our local plan sets out to address that crisis. And we also need to meet the substantially increased housing target in the most sustainable manner possible. So large sites such as Hammond's Farm are the most sustainable way to build the quantity of homes that we desperately need. And this administration will be insisting on 35% affordable homes, for all homes to be low carbon, for the developer to make the site better in an environmental sense than when they arrived and built with supporting infrastructure, such as the schools, shops, community facilities and job locations that create communities. We have had two rounds of public consultation already, and we are preparing to start on the third. And at all stages, we have used all possible communication tools to reach out to more people than ever before in a local plan process. The Chelmsford Policy Board, at its meeting on the 16th of January, will be recommended to publish the local plan for a further round of consultation. This will allow residents to further scrutinise and to make comments in the final stage of the local plan. The review of the local plan, which started in the summer of 2022, enables scrutiny and transparency throughout the process, with the public consulted at key milestones, including the previous stages we've seen of issues and options and preferred options, as well as the forthcoming pre-submission stage, which will also involve a six-week public consultation. If agreed by Chelmsford Policy Board to consult on the latest version of the local plan, then the decision whether to submit that local plan for independent examination will be made by full council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Councilor Scott, do you wish to reply?
Thank you for that information, Councilor Moore. And I'd be very grateful if you could, when you can, email that answer over to me. I'd be very grateful. I'm sorry if I sound contentious when I say this. Sorry, I'm sorry if I sound contentious perhaps when I say this, but I do think, I feel I need to say. Can you inform us of the exact number of houses and developments, large or small, that have not yet been completed? Or at least an approximate figure regarding the targets that you aim to provide for new housing? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Scott. Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Councilor Scott. I apologise, I don't have the exact number. It wasn't forming part of your earlier question, but I will get the statistics for you. I presume you mean by those sites that have planning permission but aren't yet built out? 6,972 homes with planning permission, but that have not yet been built out.
Ah, that, what I was try, sorry, what I was trying to say, perhaps I didn't make myself clear, apologies, is how the targets and where perhaps they've begun, but they haven't been completed. These are your targets, so these are houses that haven't yet even been started.
That, that have planning permission. So we are-
That have planning permission, but hasn't been started. If you could again send that over, I'd be really grateful.
Certainly can. Councilor Foster will-
I'm much obliged, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Moore and Councilor Foster. Right, agenda item number seven, exceptions to council tax premiums in respect of empty properties. I think it's Councilor Chris Davison?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor, sorry. I apologise, I have a cold. I, I'm not going to talk to this report as such, but I'll try and explain the background to it. So we collect council tax. The amount of council tax depends on mainly the size of the house the bandit's in. For certain types of property, you pay a premium. So for empty property, if the property's been empty between one and five years, you pay double the council tax. Between five and 10 years, it's three times, more than 10 years, it's four times. We're about to introduce a new premium for second homes as well. That comes in, in first of April next year. And that will be double the, the normal council tax for a second home. Now, council agreed in February 24, that's this year, to these increased premiums. There were already premiums for empty property, but they were at a lower level. So we've increased them. Now, the report also recommended some non-statutory exceptions. So what that was essentially saying was that, according to the law, every property has to pay if it's, if it's empty. But there are some circumstances where properties are empty, where it doesn't seem right. And the Conservative government was consulting at the time on some statutory exceptions. This council thought that that was a good idea. The old government thought it was a good idea. And it turns out, the current government thinks it's a good idea as well. Because they passed some legislation a couple of months ago to bring in exceptions. So there's a long list of things, they're set out in the report, where whether it's an empty property or a second home, you won't have to pay the, the, the increased rate of council tax because there's a statutory exemption. The problem is that this new law only comes in on the first of, first of April next year. So that leaves a question, what do we do this year? We've got premiums this year on properties where the old government, the new government, and this council don't think you should be paying it, but the law temporarily says you should. So what this report says is that we should adopt a policy of not trying to collect council tax in those circumstances. There are not going to be many of them, we can't say exactly how many. And we also think that it would cost us more to collect that than we're going to be able to collect. Because people are obviously going to argue if they think, everybody thinks that they're right and we're wrong for trying to pursue them. So we shouldn't, that's the proposition in this. That only applies for one year, the current year, and it only applies to empty property. Because there is no second homes premium for this year. When that comes in, the new exemptions will be enforced. There is though one loophole that the government failed to spot, which is set out in paragraph 3.1, which is a slightly obscure scenario. But it is tenants who could find themselves technically liable for probably a period of a few weeks to a premium, and that doesn't seem fair. And my submission is that we, as a council, should give officers the discretion not to try to collect in those unusual circumstances. So, Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt this report and correct what would otherwise be some wrongs for a small number of our residents.
Thank you, Councilor Davison. Do you have a second, sir? Councilor Robinson, thank you. Is there anyone here would like to ask questions, any councillors? Oh, yes, certainly. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Davison. Actually, there's a particular issue I've been investigating, where a property is being charged double, double rates, because it's, it is empty, but it's, hasn't been refurbished. And it's a community pub in Roxwell. And I wonder if consideration of whether this, this situation could apply some discretion to them. They can't put anybody in there, but they are paying double rates. It was actually empty for two years, it was empty for two years before they bought it. Is there any discretion in that particular instance?
Thank you, sir. Is there any other councillors that wish to comment?
I have a different member question, can I ask?
Do you want to wait for all these questions, Councilor Davison? Yes.
I have a member question, but that's not been submitted. Am I allowed to ask?
I'm getting a no from the officers. Is there any other councillor? Councillor Highland?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Monitoring and managing these exceptions, is that going to be a heavy workload for the staff? Or are you going to just take these exceptions on merit?
Is there any other councillor that wishes to comment? Councilor Davison, would you like to reply to Councillor Steele or name Councillor Highland?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll take Councillor Highland first. I know something about tactical action. I'm sure the officers will deal with any claims on their merits. By the time we get to the first of April next year, there will be a statutory regime, apart from the, the additional loophole that we're putting in. So they will simply apply the law on the facts as they understand them. How much work you go to, to check the facts that are put to you is a, is a question of judgement. You wouldn't want them to spend so much time that it costs more to work it out than, than it was costing. But, but clearly they need to do their jobs, and I've got a lot of confidence that our officers are doing an excellent job. So I'm hoping that we can trust them to, to continue to, to do the job they do. In relation to Councillor Steele, I think I'm aware of the specific pub that you have in mind, and I think that we have given them a grant recently. Given them a grant recently. So yes, I think we support that pub in principle. What I don't think I can do is stand here and deal with individual requests for particular taxpayers not to have to pay as much tax as is prescribed. What we are adopting tonight is a policy for the current year to tide us over to first of April next year, when we will simply be applying the law. And the proposition is that we, we bridge to that by mirroring the exceptions that have been legislated. Now, I don't know how that applies in the case of any particular business. But I think that, again, we have to leave that to, to officers to deal with. But I'd be very happy to follow up afterwards with a discussion about that, if, if that would be helpful.
Thank you, Councilor Davison. The motion tonight is to approve the recommendations in the report. Will those in favour of the recommendation please indicate by raising their hand? Will those against the recommendation please indicate by raising their hand? Recommendations in the report are agreed. Okay? I haven't got it to it yet. Agenda, agenda item eight. The next item is on the review of fees and charges. Councillor Chris Davison, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to council for working together on something that I think will help some people who would otherwise have been disadvantaged. So as regards the fees and charges report, I'm going to repeat what I said at Cabinet 10 weeks ago. Local government finance in this country is in a mess. It was the Conservative governments over a period that created this mess. It's the Labour government's job to resolve it, starting with the autumn budget on the 30th of October. I said then, we need to be ready to find our way to fill the budget shortfall and maintain services if governments continue to let us down. I said, I hoped that financial support from the government, the, the current government, would be enough to allow us to maintain services. We needed to be ready in case it isn't. And spoiler alert, I'm sorry to say, it now seems clear that it isn't going to be enough. We're going to have to solve our own problems by finding more income. The October Cabinet report recommended various actions to find ways to run services at lower cost, a review of fees and charges, a review of levels of service provision. I warned that some services may need to be scaled back if they're no longer affordable. And the development of a charge for emptying brown bins. I urged Rachel Reeves to act on the crisis in local government finance and restore financial sustainability to well-run councils like Chelmsford. This was the last chance to do it. Sadly, Labour are letting Chelmsford residents down. As this evening's report notes, I will present a budget next year from a very challenging starting position. A budget deficit of over 13 million pounds over the five-year period and a 4 million pound deficit for next year. Now, I know that residents will be asking what we've done with the council tax that they pay. The city council keeps, unfortunately, only 10 pounds of every 100 pounds of council tax that we collect. And it's the county council that gets the lion's share. Yes, council tax has gone up over the last few years. If you were paying 100 pounds in council tax in 2019, today you'll be paying 114 pounds. Costs sadly have gone up faster than this. If you take that 100 pounds that we were spending in 2019 on temporary accommodation, today that's costing us 420 pounds. Or take the 100 pounds we spent on gas and electricity in 2019, today we'd have to pay 309 pounds. So that increase in council tax, that 14 pound increase in council tax, doesn't go very far. Recent government announcements have, I'm afraid, reduced the optimism that we had in that Cabinet report in October. We've had confirmation of 1.7 million pounds of extended producer responsibility funding for next year, and that's obviously welcome. This is a tax on packaging, on producers of packaging, and it will fund our costs of dealing with packaging waste. But on the other side of the balance sheet, the autumn budget rises in the National Living Wage and National Insurance, from a financial perspective, are unwelcome because they add significant costs, even if some of that may end up being reimbursed. The 4 million pound figure that I mentioned, the gap, was based on an assumption that we'd have extra from council tax and government grants. But that now seems as though it's not going to happen, as the government is redirecting support to other areas. So with costs rising faster than funding, we need urgent action now to protect the services that residents rely on. We can't keep hoping for governments to wake up to what is happening in local government finance. I'm therefore asking council to agree to actions and to make note of a third. So firstly, this is the one to note, we have thoroughly reviewed our fees and charges, covering many services, covering leisure centres, commercial waste collection, sports pitches, taxi inspections, and plenty of others. Most of these charges will be increasing, but there are officer delegations in place that enable those increases to happen without council needing to intervene. Secondly, the proposed increases in car park and bereavement charges cannot be made under officer delegations, and I'll be inviting council to authorise these increases. And the details are in the report. And then thirdly, these on their own will not be enough. So we've concluded, I have to say very reluctantly, because we've been offering a free service for a long time, but that we have to begin charging for emptying the brown bins. All other Essex councils with a separate brown bin service have already taken this decision. We're the last one, we've held out as long as possible. So the details of the proposed charge are in the report. But in summary, if a resident wants to continue to receive the same service, they'll need to pay 60 pounds at the start of each year. 90 pounds if they want two bins emptying. We will protect the most vulnerable residents. Anyone on council tax support will pay a lower rate. Alternatively- Alternatively, residents who don't wish to pay for this service don't need to. They can compost their waste in their own garden, they can take it to an Essex recycling centre at no charge, or they can reach an informal agreement with one of their neighbours who is paying for a brown bin. We don't mind that. So in conclusion, whilst there's some extra government funding, we see nothing in what the government has announced so far that will significantly transform our finances. After more than a decade of failing, sorry, of falling conservative government support for councils, it's too little, too late from the Labour government. So we have little choice but to raise more through charges in order to safeguard services. We know our residents value our services, so increasing fees and charges, bringing in a subscription service, one that's already been introduced by other councils, is the only realistic option. We'd rather do that than cut services that matter to Chelmsford people. So I will sit down at this point and we'll be formally moving the report.
Do you have a second, sir?
I'll second and reserve my right to speak later in the debate.
Okay. Are there any councillors who wish to comment? Sir?
Thank you madam mayor. On the subject of the garden waste charges, it was only last year at full council meeting that the cabinet member for greener and safer Chelmsford stated, quote, "I can confirm that Chelmsford City Council has no plans to introduce a charge for household garden waste collections. Local authorities have been waiting for years for a national waste strategy from central government and the pace of action here is glacial. I am proud that Chelmsford City Council is leading the way in Essex and we're setting an example to other local authorities with our comprehensive curbside collection service, including garden waste", unquote. It seems to me, madam mayor, the only thing this administration is leading the way on is how to go back on their words and waste funds on vanity projects like a bunch of drunken sailors. The proposed garden waste charges will increase the amount going to landfill. There will also be an increase in the amount of garden waste being incinerated domestically and therefore the amount of CO2 emissions. How does this fit with the climate change emergency this administration announced when it first took office five years ago? The budget shortfall is going to get worse because this administration has chosen wrongly in the past and doesn't listen. The leader of the council gets to speak on this last, so will no doubt dismiss everything with the same attitude we have come to expect. But there is a positive. The garden waste charge will be the most unpopular proposal this administration has implemented so far, in my opinion. It will mark the beginning of the end for this sorry lot. Couldn't run a bath is a much-used phrase. Metaphorically, there is no doubt they can run a bath. They have simply let the taps flow with the income and reserves of this council. The only problem is they forgot the plug. Finally, if ever there was an incentive to devolve powers to a more responsible entity, we are discussing it right here. I will be voting against the proposal. Thank you.
Councillor Robinson, would you like to see if anyone else wishes to?
No, you've got to see the other questions. Take the other questions.
No, on the point of order, madam mayor, that's not how the constitution provides. Perhaps the monitoring officer could guide you on how debates are handled.
I was asking councillor Robinson if he wishes to reply to all the questions await to the end.
He's reserved his right here. You've got to take the other questions.
Okay, right.
I was just trying to explain that the constitution states that the mover of a motion moves a motion, other members speak, the second can reserve their right to speak at the end, and then the mover of the motion has a right to reply. You don't have cabinet members popping up and answering individual questions. That's not how it works.
Thank you for explaining that to everyone. Sir?
Thank you madam mayor. I would like to start off with a quote from Thomas Jefferson. Honesty is the first chapter in the book of wisdom. The Liberal Democrat-run Chelmsford City Council, as per our own books, is facing a significant financial shortfall which has been just set, a four million in 2025, and it's going to be thirteen million over the next five years. And we can clearly see there's higher council charges and it might lead to reduced services by the city council, which is tonight's agenda item showing this is happening. I firmly believe that it is now crucial for the Liberal Democrat-led Chelmsford City Council to explain their strategy for managing their deficit. It is vital that they provide a comprehensive plan of action that details how they will balance the books. This must be without imposing new charges on our residents or compromising the services that we are currently offering and looking further into prioritising of spending. Missed opportunities like the housing that's been pending for six years and plans to buy new land that have been highlighted in councillor Jeep's question earlier. Also, I would like to remind council that during the previous city council election, the Liberal Democrats said that they won't introduce brown bin charges. I see the same path of Labour government now in the city council with manifestos, promises broken, resulting in increased taxes and charges and introducing of new charges for brown bins. Additionally, I would like to request the city council to take full responsibility for the current situation rather than attributing the fault to other parties, either it's Conservatives or it's Labour. That's the easiest thing to do. The residents of Chelmsford deserve transparency and clarity on this matter and have a right to understand the precise plan to mitigate the situation. The Conservative administration left strong reserves. You have spent and have committed to spend all of them. While Labour continues to raise taxes and increase costs for working people, it is clear we need strong financial management to focus on local priorities and maintain essential services. The current trend of the Liberal Democrat-run Chelmsford City Council is showing the same pattern as the Labour government in running the country. We don't want a Liberal Democrats running a Labour-style council here in Chelmsford. Moreover, it would be worthwhile to aim higher and aspire to be among the top three councils within the country, comparable to the brilliance of the Conservative-led Essex County Council. They managed to set standards by being recognised as the most effective council for its size in the country as the top three. How do we do this as a city council and what's the plan to close the deficit without new charges being introduced to our residents? We stand together in expecting openness and accountability from our city council and managing the financial challenges they are faced with. Finally, I just wanted to end this in a nice note, I wish you all a happy festive season, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Halsey?
Thank you madam mayor. I'm disappointed by the proposal to introduce charging for garden waste. At the city council cabinet meeting on the September the 10th, this council committed to support the principles and priorities of the Waste Strategy for Essex. This strategy includes a commitment to reuse, recycle or compost sixty-five percent of waste by 2035 with an ambition to achieve seventy percent or more. The Waste and Resources Action Programme, a global environmental NGO, reports that green recycling rates usually drop by around twenty-five percent when councils start charging for garden waste collection. Collected garden waste makes up around eighteen percent of household waste. Once collected, it is composted, which creates nutrient-rich, chemical-free soil improver. The green waste that would previously have been composted usually goes to the residual waste collections and so to landfill or energy from waste. That is a more expensive method of disposal and means potentially useful nutrients going, no pun intended, to waste. Therefore, I oppose the introduction of the charge. Thank you.
Councillor Highland?
Thank you madam mayor. Just a couple of questions around three point one in the recommendation. Householders are invited to apply for a subscription online. How do people that are not online going to do? Are you going to give a service from the desk here? And at three point five, it talks about council tax support. Now, if we're providing council tax support for individuals by charging them forty-five pounds, is that giving with one hand and taking with another? Should the council tax support be exempt from this garden tax? And do you think service providers like CHP or land management companies will be affected and see the need to impose additional charges? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Highland. Sir?
Thank you madam mayor. We're all fully aware of the need to balance the books financially for this council. However, the use of charges for garden waste is one that is likely to impact more on those outside the city centre than those within it. To be clear, the council is essentially proposing an uplift in council tax contributions for those who subscribe to this scheme of over twenty-five percent next year for the exact same service that they were previously providing, which given that every resident in Chelmsford has had to tighten their belts over the last few years, this is a further kick in the teeth for those that are just trying to get by. And I want to give a couple of examples, certainly from the correspondence that I've received over the last few days. If we take the residents from the St Luke's Park development in the ward of Runwell and Rettondon, their band D property contribution to Chelmsford City Council will stand at approximately two hundred and seventy pounds, which has increased by three percent year-on-year, mainly because that's the maximum the council was allowed to raise it by, alongside their freehold service charge which is paid to a managing agent to look after the grounds that the council simply do not want to maintain. This is only repayable on these development types and that is an extra four hundred and sixty pounds per annum. That's a seventy-six percent increase in the last five years. Adding on the proposed sixty-pound charge for brown bin collection, that means that a resident on the St Luke's Park development will be paying eight hundred pounds per year for their area to be adequately kept and all of their bins collected. Even if we strip out the service charge, that's an effective twenty-seven percent increase for a band D property. Perhaps a more pointed example would be the residents that live on Hayes Country Park in the Rettondon pass from my ward, many of whom are retired and live in band A or band B properties. Those residents will see an even bigger increase if they decide to subscribe, forty percent in percentage terms, just for their garden waste to be taken away. I find it quite ironic that the administration is later on going to debate blaming central government for ridding the elderly of the winter fuel allowance, and quite rightly so. But on the other hand, we are then going to be charging elderly residents with gardens, more per annum, for their garden waste to be taken away. What is going to be the likely impact of this charging policy on the elderly residents who are most likely to own homes with gardens across the Chelmsford district alongside most likely to be having gardening as their hobby? For both examples above, can the cabinet member inform the residents what they get in return from the city council for the contribution they will make to the coffers in their local area and not just the city centre? What investment is being made in rural and parished areas within county council jurisdiction? I say this because in taking the example of the last budget in 2024-25, the ward of Runwell and Rettondon, along with other parished areas, was only mentioned in tables of what needs to be paid. No word of any investment or services provided in local areas. But the administration leading the city council are more than happy to demand ever more money from these areas to suit their own needs in areas that they themselves represent. Parish precepts are completely invested in parish areas, whereas it seems that city council contributions are simply invested north of the A12. Will residents in parished areas get any financial benefit or investment from these charges? Or is it merely designed to plug a hole in the finances of city centre spending? I would like to assume that the administration would have looked at the impact of charging for green waste collection, but this doesn't seem to have any mention within the report. What's of the unintended consequences? And as the cabinet member has pointed out, there appears to be so many loopholes in order to get round this charge. We either take it to landfill for free, we either give it to our neighbour who's already paid, or it might just be that we will simply burn it, as my fellow member for Runwell has stated. What sort of impact is that likely to have on costs and revenue? We mentioned Braintree and Basildon and Colchester with regards to these schemes and within the report we are assuming that forty percent of residents are going to take up this scheme. Are we assuming that only forty percent of residents have gardens in this area? Or are we assuming only forty percent of residents maintain their gardens? Or are they going to be the only residents who are able to have or wanting to have their garden waste taken away rather than take it to recycling centres? Of course, the administration will turn around by claiming that this is the only way forward and will use buzzwords and soundbites like capital spending, amortisation and investment, or the classic, it's whoever is in control of Westminster's fault. I see a lot of blaming of others in the report, but there never appears to be any element of the administration taking any responsibility for getting spending decisions wrong during this and the preceding term. Perhaps the cabinet member and the leader of council would like an opportunity tonight to set the record straight on that.
Thank you councillor. Ma'am?
Thank you. I think it's worth saying that it is with regret that we do have to bring this in. It's not something we want to do and no one wants to pay for something that they used to get for free. We have two options, which is to cut services or to increase costs. And in line with the value of the majority of the council, we've chosen to keep services and give people a choice as to whether to pay for them. They don't have to pay. And the other option is there's no choice. And that's a decision we've sort of decided not to take as a group this time.
Thank you. Councillor Whitehead?
Can I thank all the members who've spoken so far, who've said all the things I was going to say, which is excellent, because it's just because we're in agreement. And I did indeed make some of those on the radio this morning. In particular, I think the point that was just made about the increases, indeed, that's right, yes, I calculated a twenty-seven percent increase. And of course, for a single person, it's an increase of thirty-six percent. We won't disagree on what it was, but it's a huge increase in council tax. And it's a disguised increase in council tax. I mean, I know, of course, that you can't put it up because the government rules, which I entirely disagree with, which don't allow us to do things individually. Might come back to the point of unitary authorities later on for councillor Robinson, because, yeah, different rules apply in different places. But equally, I'm aware of the problems of finance and it doesn't matter which government it is, both of them have got it entirely wrong in that sense really, by denuding councils of money and dumping new things on them all the time really. And you and we agree entirely on that, I think, really. Certainly, the current government have managed to make things worse in record times. At least it took us ten years to get it wrong, as opposed for five months. And so from that point of view, I think we need perhaps to look. I would try to offer you a suggestion here, which you may or not want to go down, but the point about bands A to F and so on is an important one really. You could shade the charges per band rather than pick out one number out of the air. It's the situation you have with the TV licence where it's a lump sum, everybody pays it really. And in this particular case, as was mentioned earlier, you have the situation where those on the least amount of money will actually pay the same as those of us who earn somewhat more really. And I'd like you to consider banning the charges so that, if you like, let's say twenty pounds, thirty pounds, forty pounds, fifty pounds, just the big numbers out of the air for this moment. But to go down that route, depending on the band in which people live really, I think that would be better in many ways than just plucking one charge out of the air. The other points really, yes, people will dump it in their black bins and that's what we don't want to do. And the point was made equally earlier on about affecting those and we have the motions of council which I'm not going to say too much on at this stage, but nonetheless are ones which see the winter fuel allowance taken away with one hand and sixty pounds for their bins or if they're lucky like I am, have two bins, even more money. We should all declare interest presumably this evening really, we have bins that you're about to charge us for, but I'll skip that one. So from that, with all the other charges, we're putting up bereavement charges at a time when there is competition, isn't there? And we are, I hope, taking note of that. Again, the point was made, there's nothing in the papers tonight and I'm agreeing equally that it'll come in the budget rather than tonight because you want to do them now, I understand that. But there's no sort of reasoning behind some of it. Finally, you mentioned what you said at cabinet really, I could repeat what I said at cabinet equally last time really. I could repeat what I said at cabinet equally last time, really, and it's a bit long and I'll run out of time, so I won't say it. But it all comes back to the point that councillor Deeds was making earlier on, is the lack of use of, or the incorrect, in my view, use of our capital. You know my views on Waterside, still nothing, I notice. There's another hole in the ground. We won't mention the John Shannon playing fields again this evening. But we are in a situation where you do have the ability, if you had chosen to go, to sell off assets at the right price, use that money and invest it, you would have earned more than you would be for charging £60 for bins. So there were alternatives. It's a point that I made, I know, to the team that were here reviewing us a couple of weeks ago, is that very often we have no disagreement with the people on the other side of this table. It's just that we don't always understand what they're doing and why they're doing it, and what the alternatives are. And the point was made earlier on that, really. So if you would like to consider our particular views, I won't seek an amendment and all sorts of things this evening, really, I would rather that you go away and think about that in the sense of banning such a charge to make it more acceptable. The other charges on car parking and so on, yes, we've put them up in the past and you've put them up now, and it is depressing that we have indeed to do the opposite of what you've just said we ought to do, which, if I can quote, who says, 'Protect the services residents rely on'. Well, the one they most rely on is waste collection, it's top of the list, isn't it? We all know that. The one that people actually want is proper waste collection. We have a fantastically good waste collection, and we're taking away the service that they like the most. So we'll see what happens in the future. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Whitehead. Anyone else want to comment? Sir?
Thank you. I hadn't intended to speak, but I'd just been a little bit disappointed by the tenure and tone of some of this debate. It's very easy to sit there and to get angry about things, but the complete lack of any alternative suggestions about what you would do if you were in power, and what independent members would do if ever they got anywhere close to power. And I'm just wondering, really, whether members opposite have contacted their Conservative colleagues on all the other councils in Essex and have expressed your displeasure at them doing it to their residents, or whether you're quiet on that. They have done it in every single other comparable authority, almost all of them Conservative-run. So this isn't party political, this is a necessity, and I second councillor Sampson's views with that. I think it's about time the opposition came up with some realistic ideas that could fund things rather than just aiming these shots.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment? Councillor Dobson?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'll just follow that. If we start charging for brown bins and the uptake reduces to around 40% as suggested, what operational savings will be realised? And, you know, what would that be? Has that been factored in? And secondly, I understand this council purchased land recently at Little Waltham for tree planting. Bearing by the difficulties in balancing the books, should this council not be concentrating on spending on core services rather than buying land for planting trees? Thank you, madam mayor.
Any other councillor? Councillor Robinson?
Thank you.
Would you like to reply?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. And as councillor Thompson was saying, there have been some, I'm going to call it faux anger from the other side. Tell you what I'm angry about, 521 homeless families, that's what I'm angry about. And that's what we're trying to, that's what we have to find the money to look after, partly because you didn't build social rented houses whilst you were in charge. You didn't build affordable housing, you never met the affordable housing target once in your 16 years in charge, never, not once. And that is the legacy that you bequeathed us, a housing crisis made worse by your government that you got elected in 2019, that screwed up the economy. When you, some of you in this room, I don't know which ones, want to fess up to voting for Liz Truss, but those of you that voted for Liz Truss, you are responsible for the rampant inflation and the Truss mini-budget that we saw in 2022 that caused a financial crisis that affects every single council, Conservative, Labour, Liberal, Independent, every council in the country was bequeathed that awful, awful legacy by your government that you got elected. This is a financial issue. It isn't an environmental issue, and without putting on the spot, councillor Moore, you know, there's a bit of a struggle, completely, because councillor Moore is, as you know, our environmental champion and has put so much work into getting the green climate action on to the agenda. And we've had, as we've said, this is a really difficult decision for us. But it's a lot easier than cutting services. Now, a couple of questions, will it increase black bin waste? Other councils report that no, that it hasn't seen an increase in black bin waste. And councillor Clark, you're absolutely right that we said we had no plans, because we didn't. And we also said at the time, the government needs to help us with the housing crisis. Not only did they not help us, they made it worse. And this government hasn't helped either. So, as Keane said, when the facts change, I change my mind. What do you do? Councillor Papper asked how will we balance the budget with increasing charges? There is only one way you do that, and it's by cutting services. In 2014, your colleagues cut 26 posts because they thought that was a good way to protect services by getting rid of public services. That's not what we want to do. We want to protect services. So it's a choice. You can increase charges or you can cut services. There is no other way to balance the budget. Yes, councillor Matty asked about composting at home. Yeah, that is the greenest way to do it, absolutely. And we encourage people to compost at home. But unfortunately, that won't be included in the recycling figures. Frustrating, because of the way recycling is calculated by weight collected, it doesn't actually include people who are home composting. So, and as has been mentioned, yes, our modelling does assume that less than half will take this up, and some of those people, we expect them to compost at home. That'd be great, it'd be great. And yes, we will look next year at adjusting the rounds potentially, but obviously, given that we are building over 1,000 homes a year, we do actually have to look at that about adding rounds, collection rounds onto our schedules. So over time, it will balance out. And obviously, the smallest homes, flats don't have gardens, and so they won't pay anything. And if they are flats with gardens, it will be paid through their service charge. Councillor Whitehead, once again, back to his old record, he wants us to sell assets. We prefer to invest in our assets and get an income from them. And that is a fundamental difference between the Conservatives and us. He wants to sell the family silver, and we don't. We want to use it for public benefit. And as councillor Davison was saying earlier, the local government settlement, which was announced just in the last few hours, is actually slightly worse than we were expecting when we wrote the report to cabinet, or even when we drafted this report. So there is even more reason to act now to stabilise the council's finances. I mean, it's been mentioned, you know, it's not just about the Liz Truss mini-budget, but it was the botched exit from the EU and so many other things in the previous government, including failing to get to grips with the housing crisis, all of which have driven up our costs and have contributed to the housing crisis. I said, over 520 homeless families that we have to look after. And the many millions of pounds extra to put fuel in the bin lorries, to heat the swimming pools, to house those families. Our income from government, your government, went down by almost £16 million in real terms since 2010, and fuel and housing budgets have gone up by around £5 million a year extra. So that's a neck change to us, so £21 million a year, worse off, thanks to your government, on top of the general inflation in the pay budget, yeah, and other prices. So you have a choice. You haven't told us what you would do as an alternative. And to borrow Margaret Thatcher's phrase, there is no alternative. You have, we either increase charges or we cut services. We're not going to cut services. I hope you'll vote for the report.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Councillor?
Madam mayor. I have to say, I've been somewhat disappointed at the tone of the debate this evening. Anger, abuse, which I don't think was appropriate. Incorrect assertions, as councillor Robinson has said, we didn't have plans to introduce this charge. We also, I will come back to, have introduced it after Conservative councils elsewhere in Essex. The proposition at the time that we were previously asked about this was that we were hoping that the Conservative government, or any future government, would see which way, which way the wind was blowing in terms of local government finance, the number of councils that have already gone bust, and would have to do something about it. Unfortunately, they haven't done enough about it. It's been too little, too late. That's why we've been forced reluctantly to introduce the garden waste charge. So yes, we did have a plan, but the plan was scuppered elsewhere. We don't have control over our finances, we don't have control over how much council tax we can increase, we don't have control over how much grant we get from government, which is no more now in cash terms than it was, subject to a minor rounding point, no more now than it was 10 years ago in round, in cash terms, not real terms. And given the inflation that a previous government generated, that is pretty frustrating. The waste strategy for Essex, I'm slightly puzzled as to why it is that other Conservative councils in Essex that had a green waste charge were not undermining the waste strategy for Essex, but we somehow are when we introduce a green waste charge. That doesn't stack up for me. Councillor Highland asked about the process. We'll be informing residents, they'll have a period in which to subscribe for the stickers for the bins. If you want more information on supplies afterwards. The council tax support, if you look around the country, most councils don't give a discount for people on council tax support. We are giving a discount, a few other councils do, and we will, because we think it's important to give a discount. As regards who it affects, it affects everybody equally if you've got a garden and want your garden waste removing. The people who are better off are more likely to have large gardens with large amounts of garden waste and need two bins. The people who are less well-off probably live in flats and don't generate any garden waste at all, or if they do, they may live in small houses and maybe can put their garden waste into their neighbours' bins on the few occasions when they have any. I'm hoping that that will be how it works. I really sympathise over that grounds charge of £460, the 76% increase. That's terrible. That is something that this council tried to change as soon as we took office in 2019. Unfortunately, national planning rules don't enable us to enforce it. We have been trying to avoid that scenario happening by encouraging all developers to hand their green space to this council to look after, so it is covered in their council tax charge, and they don't have to pay that extra grounds charge. That is terrible. We have done what we can, but we're limited in what we can do. The 40% take-up, yes, the prudent assumption for budget purposes is that we'll get 40% take-up. I'm hoping that we'll get more than 40%. The amount of take-up is dependent on which residents want to pay for, to have the bin service, the brown bin service, which residents decide that they're not going to pay. We don't know what proportion it will be. I think we can say it will be significantly less than 100%. Not everybody will want to do so, because there are other options. But if it's more than 40%, that will be great. It will also be not the same, the proportion of the garden waste that goes into home composting or goes into a brown bin will not be the same as the proportion of the residents that pay for brown bins, because, as I've said, you are welcome to reach a local agreement with your neighbours. It's...
Councillor?
So I will, okay, I will finish off then. Apologies that I haven't responded to every question. If there's anything important that I've missed, please write to me and I will respond to you. And I will move then that council approves the changes to the fees and charges and the introduction of a new charge on garden waste collection. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you. The motion is to approve the recommendation in the report. Sorry, councillor Highland, I've taken guidance and it's too late.
Sorry, point of order. I'd like to ask if there are enough members here to take a named vote?
You would need 10 councillors to support you for a recorded vote. It will be a recorded vote. The motion is to approve the recommendation in the report. Were those in favour of the recommendation, please indicate by not only raising their hands, but also for Mr Bird to call out their names.
Thank you, madam mayor. What I'll do to make it a bit easier, I'll run through every councillor's name, and then if you can just tell me if you're for, against, or abstaining, and that'll be in alphabetical order. So first, councillor Addichum, please.
For.
And councillor Armstrong?
Against.
And councillor Bonnet?
Against.
Councillor Canning? And councillor Hazel-Clark?
For.
Councillor Paul-Clark?
Against.
Councillor Davie?
For.
Councillor Anne-Davidson?
For.
Councillor Chris-Davidson?
For.
Councillor Steve Davis?
Against.
Councillor Deakin?
For.
Councillor Dudley?
For.
Councillor Dobson?
Against.
Councillor Ely?
For.
Councillor Franks?
For.
Councillor Foster?
For.
Councillor Friscone?
For.
Councillor Fuller?
For.
Councillor Marie-Goldman? Councillor Simon-Goldman?
For.
Councillor Hall?
For.
Councillor Highland?
Against.
Councillor Jeeps?
Against.
Councillor John?
Against.
Councillor Knight?
For.
Councillor Large?
For.
Councillor Lee?
For.
Councillor Mascot?
For.
Councillor Massey?
Against.
Councillor Moore?
For.
Councillor Papper?
Against.
Councillor Puli?
For.
Councillor Potter?
Abstain.
Councillor Rajesh?
For.
Councillor Robinson?
For.
Councillor Sampson?
For.
Councillor Scott?
Against.
Councillor Sherlock?
For.
Councillor Sizme?
Against.
Councillor Andrew Sogian?
For.
Councillor Jeanette Sogian?
For.
Councillor Steele?
Again.
Councillor Sullivan?
Abstain.
Councillor Taylor? Councillor Fullpaps?
Against.
Councillor Walsh?
For.
Councillor Whitehead?
Against.
Councillor Wilson?
Against.
And councillor Young?
For.
Thank you. The motion is being carried.
Thank you. Recommendation in the report, I would agree. General item nine. This item is the Treasury Management Midyear Review for 2024/25 from the Treasury Management and Investment Subcommittee on the 14th of October. Councillor Chris-Davidson?
Madam mayor, thank you. I'm not going to say much about this. It's been to Treasury Management and Investment Subcommittee. We had a good discussion there. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank members of the Subcommittee for their work on that. We had another councillor attend at the last meeting and ask questions, and that was welcome, so I'd invite anybody who's got an interest to do that. We had a good discussion about this report, which essentially says that at the mid-year, everything's going fine. And that went to cabinet, cabinet passes it here, and therefore I move that council note this report, but I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Do you have a second, Ed?
Second.
Any questions, any comments? Councillor Highland?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for this report. I'd just like to ask the £450,000 in higher-than-expected cash balances, could that have been used to prevent introduction of new charges, service charges or costs?
No. It's a one-off, isn't it? We need a sustainable budget. That's what we'll come back to in January. That's what the fees and charges report that we've just been discussing is about. It's about putting our finances on a sustainable footing. There were one-off circumstances in the first half of this year that led to more income than expected. The balance was higher than forecast because capital expenditure was slower than budgeted. It tends to be. That's been the practice frequently. I think it was what used to happen under the previous administration as well. And interest rates turned out to be higher during that period than had originally been expected when the budget was put together. So there was a one-off there and we're happy that it generated a bonus, but that's not the solution to the problem that we've just been discussing.
Thank you, councillor Davidson. Motion is to approve the recommendation in the report. For those in favour of the recommendation, please indicate by raising their hands. Thank you. For those against the recommendation, please indicate by raising their hand. Turn over. Motion to approve the recommendation is agreed. Item, agenda item number 10. This item is for the Gambon Act 2005 Statement of Licensing Principles from the Licensing Committee on the 3rd of October. Councillor Ely, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do the best I can, but I've lost my voice today. So this report was presented to the Licensing Committee on the 3rd of October and agreed. It went out for consultation between the 10th of October and the 7th of November. Then was presented to Cabinet on the 12th of November. No comments were received during consultation, and I propose that the council adopt this latest version. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Really happy? Do you have a second, Ed?
Thank you.
Councillor Robinson? Is there any councillor that wishes to comment on this report? The motion is to approve the recommendation in this report. For those in favour of the recommendation, please indicate by raising their hand. Thank you. For those against the recommendation, please indicate by raising their hand. Motion to approve the recommendation is agreed. Agenda item number 11 is the annual report of the Audit and Risk Committee from the Audit and Risk Committee on the 18th of September. Councillor Walsh?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Audit and Risk Committee recently agreed its annual report, which full council is asked tonight to approve for publication. I'm pleased to bring this annual report of the Audit and Risk Committee to the committee, or to the council tonight, and the report outlines the committee's working achievements for 23/24. The annual report details various areas, including the work programme for the year 23 to 24, the terms of reference of the audit charter, and future work going forward for the year 24 to 25. During the previous year, the committee met four times and considered matters, including the internal audit reports, the risk management reports, and updates from the external audit. I would like to express my thanks to the officers and members of the committee who have supported the work by presenting and discussing reports. I'm happy to answer any questions and then recommend that the council approves this annual report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a second, Ed? You're doing a lot of seconding tonight, aren't you? Was there any councillor that would like to comment on this report? The motion is to approve the recommendation in the report. For those in favour of the recommendation, please indicate by raising their hand. Thank you. Is there anyone against the recommendation? Motion to approve the recommendation is agreed. Agenda item 12 is the annual report of the Governance Committee from the Governance Committee on the 16th of October. Councillor Franks, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't actually chair the committee during the period of the report, but we thought we'd give you a break from councillor Davidson this evening. So council is asked to approve the annual report of the Governance Committee. This report's on the work of the committee last year, the year 2023 to 24. The report details various areas of work during 2023 to 24, including monitoring the council's approach to governance, complaints against city, parish or town councillors, changes to the constitution, and monitoring matters such as whistleblowing and the use of investigative powers. I or councillor Davidson would be happy to answer any questions, and we would like to propose that council approve this annual report. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank officers who have worked on these matters during the year, not least the monitoring officer. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a second, Ed? I'll write your name down again. Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this report? Councillor Highland?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the report. Item 1.8 says that this committee is politically balanced. The makeup of this committee is not politically balanced, as it excludes an independent group due to the use of the five-two instead of a four-to-one construct. And also, should an incumbent chair any governance or scrutiny committee, could this lead to a conflict of interest? And within the document, there was some reference to material outside the document, statist, on 3.11. The statistic information is then published on the website. It would be helpful if a hyperlink perhaps would go to that reference point. Just helps the readership to digest the information a little better. And it's 6.1 in the conclusion. It says improvements have been identified. Did they actually get listed in the report? Thank you.
I was just going to respond to the political balance point. The committee is politically balanced. It does comply with the rules on that, and I think the point you're making is it's probably that there's a lack of understanding of what the rules are. So where a group, for example, has three members, that doesn't mean they're entitled to a seat on every committee, and it's not a four-two-one split across all of committees where there's seven members on a committee. That's not how the political balance rules work. What happens is the number of seats across the council are proportionate. So, and what that means, when we do a report at annual council, we look at the number of seats for each group. So the Conservatives, as a larger group, will have a larger number of seats. And the smaller group, the independent group, are entitled to a certain number of seats across all of committees, which means they don't have seats on all of the committees because they're a small group. That's basically how the rules work. We have added more information in on the political balance rules and how that's done, because I did understand, not perhaps all members would understand, it's a bit complicated. But I can certainly say that the Governance Committee does meet the political balance rules. I'm happy to have a further conversation outside of this meeting, but I thought it was important to clarify that.
Thank you. Do councillor Davidson or councillor...
Yeah, so on the readability and everything of the report...
Please stand.
Oh, yeah, sorry. On the readability and such of the report, happy to pass on any of your comments and speak to you about how we might review that for the report next year. And I'll ask if councillor Davidson has any other comments about the questions that you raised. Otherwise, no.
Thank you. Motion is to approve the recommendation in the report. For those in favour of the recommendation, please indicate by raising their hand. For those against the recommendation, please indicate by raising their hand. Thank you. Motion is to approve the recommendation as agreed. Agenda item 13, committee membership. Councillor Robinson?
I move the recommendation on the report to change the planning committee membership.
Who's going to second it? Can't put Robinson twice. Is there anyone that wishes to comment? Councillor Whitehead?
Sorry, it was too late, but councillor Bonnet, of course, is here now and it's already published. Can we work some working out so that she can replace councillor Grundy, if that's appropriate under this item?
Yes, so the monitoring officer has the power to do that under delegated power, so she can do that. Yeah.
Thank you. The motion is to approve the recommendation in the report.
Councillor Highland again.
Sorry, I find it difficult to see at the back there, but councillor Highland do comment.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to stand and, I'd like to give thanks to councillor Pooley for his service on the planning committee, and I hope this was not an imposed change, but a mutually undertook one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The motion is to approve the recommendation in the report. For those in favour of the recommendation, please indicate by raising their hand. Thank you. Those against the recommendation, please indicate by raising their hand. Motion to approve the recommendation is agreed. Agenda item 14, notice of motion. We now have a notice of motion on winter fuel payments that will be moved by councillor Anne-Davidson and seconded by councillor Smithy Rashid. I hope I've pronounced that correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the older person is champion, I was particularly concerned when I heard the news that this allowance was being withdrawn for all those, all but those on pension credit. Whilst there are many pensioners who clearly don't need this allowance, there are many others who do. Nationally, there are over 880,000 pensioners who are eligible for pension credit but not claiming it. Some of these will be our residents, so we need to do what we can to get a fairer system for them. The government knows that there's lots of pensions who can't afford to heat their homes without this payment. There's a reason for this. Applying for pension credit is complicated, puts people off. Others have no one to help them. The government has set a level of income, pension credit plus the £300 winter fuel allowance, that they regard as the minimum level to keep warm this winter. So there's a group of people here that they know are below that level because they haven't claimed pension credit. I do know that here in Chelmsford, organisations such as Citizens Advice and Chelmsford Housing Partnership have been helping pensions with their applications for pension credit, and I'd like to thank everyone who's played a part in that. There's an income limit for pension credit above which you don't qualify. So the consequence is that if you lose that £300 because you've got maybe one pound of extra income. This is a cliff edge, and it creates another group of people that the government say don't have enough to live on and keep warm. Cutting off the limit for receiving the winter fuel allowance at the pension credit level is unfair. The minimum the limit should be, should be the pension credit plus £300. That's the only way to make sure that the group of pensioners with income just above that current cliff edge would have enough money to heat their homes this winter. And by the way, for anybody listening, the deadline for submitting the pension credit applications in time to get the winter fuel for our payment this year is a minute to midnight on Saturday. Therefore, Madam Mayor, I move the motion with the three points for action.
Thank you. Is councillor Ajes going to comment?
I will speak after there is...
Okay.
After this. Thank you.
Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this? Councillor Pooley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You'll excuse me if I don't stand up?
Of course.
Thank you. Yeah, councillor Whitehead earlier on wondered whether he ought to have declared an interest because he had a garden, and I, of course, there are others here who might be wondering whether they had to declare an interest this time around because they're a pensioner, which I have to do. Now, I'm fortunate that I'm one of the people who's in a position to meet this charge without undue, without undue pain, I think. Time will tell. I continue to look at how long my pension savings are going to last, but that's another story. So the clause in here about the eligibility, for me, is the key one, whether one opposes or agrees with the government's action in removing this tax credit. I think the same applies. The government doesn't seem to be very good at recognising cliff edges, does it? Because they've done the same thing with imposing the national insurance payments on business. And in that case too, I would argue, and I think others here might agree, that they've set the threshold wrongly in terms of protecting care homes, councils for that matter, but that's leave councils aside, care homes and care workers, and the whole basis of the employers who are caught by the national insurance increase, again, threatens with the closure of a lot of those businesses and care homes. I've been working with one just the other day, asking me who here can lobby successfully for the government to take notice of that, and it's delightful that we see our MP here to carry that further forward, and our chief executive for that matter. But in the context of this motion, it's the eligibility which needs to be raised and you quoted £300, which I'm sure is a good figure. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone, another councillor that wishes to comment? Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a resident speak to me last week. Both her and her husband are pensioners, and because of personal situations, she does work. She gets a very small amount of money, but she works really for him to keep herself sort of mentally stable. She contacted the water company, I'm not quite sure, well, I'm not going to say anyway who it was and what area, and basically they said because she works, she would not be entitled. I know this has nothing to do exactly with the heating, but it's all linked. And she was told that because of literally two or £300, she wasn't entitled to any benefits. And this is to me, this is how it's going to be with the situation we're talking about, and people are going to get through the net. I just wanted to put that to everybody that's here. There are going to be people who will get through the net, and there could be very serious situations from this. Thank you.
Councillor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for all the contributions. I will now quickly sum up. While the goal is to target those most in need, pensioners who do not qualify for pension credit but still have low incomes find themselves excluded from the winter fuel payment. This increases the financial pressure on people who are already vulnerable and struggle to cover their heating costs. It has disproportionately affected the middle-class pensioners who may have savings or income above the threshold for the pension credit, but still struggle with the rising costs of heating in the winter. They are sometimes not even eligible for other forms of financial aid and hence are facing increased hardship. On the other hand, pensioners who are eligible for pension credit need to go through a means testing process to confirm their eligibility. Some elderly people find this process complicated, confusing, and even stigmatizing, potentially deterring them from applying for the assistance they need. Pensioners are upset and view the change as unfair as it penalizes them. They have worked hard during their lives but are not eligible for pension credit. It has created resentment among certain groups of pensioners who feel that they are being unfairly treated or left behind despite having contributed to the system. In these times of economic uncertainty, this cutback has led to many older people having to choose between heating and other essentials like food. This is a step backward in supporting older generations and looking after their wellbeing. I request the council to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Anne-Davidson, you have the opportunity to sum up. Before the vote is taken, I might point out to you that councillor Highland did put his hand up and I didn't see. Would you wish to take councillor Highland's question?
I don't need to say anymore, but we'll take councillor Highland's question then. I may come back.
Please accept my apology.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. So words matter here. The pensioners were not tested for eligibility, as it says in the paper. It was universally gifted. So nobody was assessed when they were first getting this, and given we have a range of wealth in this demographic, means-tested support is appropriate. This motion is a nuisance motion. It's mixing national and local issues. This motion is also stating the obvious. Its current practice is taking place, and there's nothing to resolve. Propose that you remove some of this rhetoric from your... Propose that you remove some of this rhetoric from your entry. As I understand it, the government is already reviewing the implementation, including the threshold setting mentioned earlier, which I believe pension credit support should be given to those below the national living wage levels of income. Can I suggest that you either withdraw this motion or amend the motion to ask this council to take positive action and budget for an increased household support funding or lobby upper-tier councils to increase their local support to supplement identified needs?
Thank you. Councillor Davidson.
I'm certainly not going to withdraw the motion and I'm not going to change it. It stands as it does. And the mix of national and local, what I was trying to say was some of these people who are affected are our residents. And many of those, we won't actually know who they are. That's the point. Many of these will slip through the net, as councillor Ajes pointed out. Which is why I've been talking to people who work with CAB, who volunteer for CAB. And I also asked HPP what they were doing for their elderly tenants. And they've held, they had a couple of days where they invited everybody along. They helped them apply for their pension credit and so on. So there are things happening locally. We wish that it didn't have to be like that, but that was the whole point about the local issue. These are our residents, some of them, and, you know, I really would like to know who they are, but they're very hard to reach, some of them. But I think the way it's been applied is it needs changing, which is what the motion was designed to do.
Thank you, councillor Davidson. Please indicate by raising your hand whether you're agreed to the motion. Are there any against? The motion is agreed. Agenda item 16, notice of motion. This item is on the agenda as a notice of motion on addressing the cost of living, including energy, will be moved by councillor Robinson and seconded by councillor Moore. As members will have seen, an amendment to this motion has been submitted and circulated by the Conservative group. I understand that councillor Robinson and councillor Massey have agreed some changes to the amendment to then become the motion. Councillor Robinson, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. In April 2019, my party was campaigning for climate action in the election campaign. In May 2019, when we took over the leadership of the council, we started putting plans in place to take action, including by appointing councillor Moore as Cabinet Deputy for Ecology. In July, we declared a climate and ecological emergency. In January 2020, we put in place an action plan. This is all about embedding action across the council, not just saying words but taking actions. On the 26th of November, a few, couple of weeks ago, the Love Your Chelmsford team launched a new campaign, Cutting Carbon at Home, with advice, practical tips to help you save energy, reduce your carbon footprint and access grants for home upgrades like heat pumps and solar panels. So we're encouraging and helping residents to do their bit as well. I could have mentioned this on the previous motion, actually. We've also updated the website page, Extra Help for Residents, to help with the cost of living crisis. And that's on our website as well. This motion takes another step or two further forward. It underlines that action on climate change is a way to save money, despite what some of the scaremongers say. It proposes saving money in really practical ways. In the short term, by cutting energy costs, by cutting those bills which have been spiralling out of control over the last three years, as we've already talked about this evening. But in the long term, it attempts to save some of the costs, the damage that we've done in the decades ahead by climate change. The other bits which are new, which are completely new, and we are asking this council to endorse new policy that we are putting into our revised local plan, further turning our campaigning words into actions. So we are in the motion, and this is going forward into our local plan, including a higher ambition for biodiversity net gain and tougher requirements on developers to make the homes that they build low-carbon, if not zero-carbon. The real tragedy is that we're now 10 years behind where we should be on this. In 2007, the Labour government legislated that all new homes would be carbon neutral by 2016. The Liberal Democrats kept that policy going. Unfortunately, in 2015, when the Conservatives had a majority, they gave in to pressure from developers who provide around one-quarter of all donations to the Conservative Party and removed that target in 2015. And so those councils like us that wanted to be ambitious have not been allowed to be. So when people say, for example, "Why don't you insist on solar panels on the roof of every house?", we can't because your government wouldn't let us. So this motion summarizes some of the things we've done today, but also takes us to the next step, as I say, and adds a couple of things that we are putting forward in our local plan, which, as we heard earlier, is about to go out for its final round of consultation. I have just two minor points as I come to the end of my remarks. One, as regards the Climate and Nature Bill, I have my expert on Commons business here and she pointed out she will be voting for it, but on the 24th of January, not the 25th, as we put in the motion. There was a typo there. I hope she can persuade our two other MPs for the district to vote for it. And the final point I want to make is, as you said in opening, relating to the amendment from councillor Massey. We're not, we feel it's not a terribly thought-through proposal and may in fact have unexpected consequences. However, in the spirit of seasonal goodwill, we have decided to adopt it into our motion with the minor changes that councillor Massey and Whitehead and I have agreed. So namely, in the section this council calls on to insert a new line, little d, the government to remove stamp duty on low-carbon and low-energy homes if that will assist this housing market sector. So assuming councillor Massey is content with that, we can now have one discussion on one motion without the amendment being separately debated. So I so move.
Content, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Moore, would you like to second and comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to second and I'd like to reserve my right to comment until we enter the debate. Thank you very much.
Is there any councillor who would like to comment? Councillor Highland.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a question rather than a comment. With this paper, has there been any cost-benefit analysis that provides us a sound business case to increase from zero-carbon ready to net-zero carbon? Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Moore?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your question, councillor Highland. When you refer to the cost analysis, we are constantly working with developers to make sure that they honour that their low-carbon initiatives, if they support them already. In essence, development can be a very carbon-heavy business, not least in embodied carbon. And that is an aspect that we still need to tackle as a country. So you're looking at the cost in terms of the financial cost of building materials and of passive house standard models for truly healthy, zero-carbon homes. But you're also looking at the social costs and where elements used in building materials are mined, for instance. And there may be some implications of modern slavery and exploitation. So it's a wide subject. The motion this evening is a statement of intent to further that conversation, to direct that conversation to the highest level of government. But also, as I hope to outline in my summary, to unite authorities, not just across Essex, because that's already happening, but learning from authorities who are already trailblazing in this regard and London boroughs who are doing great things. Quietly establishing social housing that is passive house standard and zero-carbon. And it ensures that heating costs are minimal for the residents who live there who are in the most need. So the cost analysis will come through broad policymaking to ensure that we are sticking to our targets and we hold government to account to honour their pledge to carbon neutrality by 2050. Speaking to the amendment, Madam Mayor, I am very happy to also reflecting the goodwill of the festive season and would like to thank councillor Whitehead for engaging positively with us and councillor Massey too. And I am pleased to hear words of support from the other side of our council chamber, particularly given the Conservative Party's track record to date on climate action, carbon reduction and affordable housing. And as regards the amendment, I was also happy to see the slight changing to the wording. There is no such thing as a carbon-friendly housing when it comes to development and sustainable, livable futures for us all. Carbon is not our friend and I am glad that we've agreed to the draft wording being amended to low-carbon. We should also aspire to zero-carbon at every opportunity we have as a local authority. Councillor Robinson referenced the 2007 Labour government commitment and I'm afraid all of that fell by the wayside in 2015. But the good news is that we are no longer alone in pressing government for urgent action as a local authority. And the direct and the wider benefits of net-zero homes are now recognised, even at Essex County Council level. We just need the strength of political wills to align across all of our districts. Some cold hard facts that retrofitting properties is unsustainable and already eye-wateringly expensive. And if you imagine that we need to build a new home, I think every two minutes in order to fulfil the government's ambition of 1.5 million, that will be absolutely crippling. We need to be absolutely sure that we complete checks and ensure that EPC ratings are also measured in our social housing. Older and lower-rated properties are prone to higher levels of damp, fungal bloom and particulates as well. So we're talking about healthy housing. It's not just about net-zero figures. This isn't just words. We want to establish the link between net-zero housing and healthier, happier communities who find that their energy bills are much lower. We can only do so much as local authorities to reduce our own carbon emissions and to give nature space to thrive, as we've done in Chelmsford as a Libden council since 2019 through our declaration and our comprehensive action plan. And we are already highlighting the benefits of zero-carbon homes through planning guidance and now with the forthcoming review of our local plan to 2041 in our policymaking. At county level, the Essex Design Guides Policy Position Document, which you can see on the website, provides template policies for district councils so we can build a collective commitment to net-zero homes across local planning authorities across the county. And through their respective local plan review processes, I'm very pleased to say that Cornwall and Bath and North Somerset councils now have newly adopted local plans that do indeed include zero-carbon homes as standard for all new developments.
Councillor Moore, could we find out?
So to summarize and to finish, this is a first step. This is a lobbying call to not just to the government but to all levels of governance and to make sure that we uphold our commitment as a local authority to our residents providing safer, healthier homes that are net-zero in operation. And I support the motion and hope sincerely that members will choose to vote for it this evening.
Thank you, councillor Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Robinson.
Yeah, I'll be very brief because there hasn't been much to respond to. But very specifically, I'll add something which councillor Moore wasn't responsible for, was it before she took on the portfolio? But three years ago, I think it was three years ago, we asked Countryside to evaluate, to answer your question, councillor Highland, what is the cost, what is the actual cost of making what you might call a normal home, carbon-neutral? And Countryside, we had a consultant, we got a grant from Homes England to fund that research and the answer was £12,200, which isn't very much when you're talking about a four, five, six-hundred-thousand-pound home. And for that relatively small investment, you can reduce your energy costs to a couple of hundred pounds a year instead of possibly a thousand or even two thousand pounds a year. So it's very clear, as our motion sets out, that taking action on climate change should save people money both in the short term in energy costs and in the long term in climate damage. So thank you for the support. Although you haven't explicitly said it, I'm assuming you're supporting the motion with your amendment included in it. But I hope we can all move forward together. And as I said, and I hope the Climate and Nature Bill passes in the Commons in January and eventually makes it into law. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Please indicate by raising your hand whether you're agreed to the motion. Are there any councillors against? The motion is agreed. Thank you. I've not been informed of any urgent items of business, but I would like to say that this concludes this evening's business. And I thank you for your attendance. Visitors are asked to leave the chamber and members are asked to remain for a couple of minutes for an information